If we could all take a seat, I'd appreciate it. We're gonna get this meeting going. Because it is 6:00 PM. What is it? If you're early, you're on time, and you're on time, you're late. So I guess I'm late. Vince would be disappointed. All right, I'm gonna call the meeting to order. Roll call?
Morris?
Here.
Larson? Smith?
Here.
Perkins?
Here.
McAdams? Verbic?
Here.
Favor?
Here.
Mayor Barnes?
Here.
Six present.
Fantastic. And I would love it if Chief McMaster could lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
Oh, mine.
Flag?
Done, done.
We don't have a flag?
No.
Um...
Can we do one up on the screen?
Yeah, see Jeff can put one up on the screen. That'd be awesome. Wow. This is a first. So guests that haven't been here before, usually we have a flag on display, and we start every meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance. I wouldn't have to have it on. It worked. There we go, he's doing it. This is, uh, the Marine Corps motto, I believe, is adapt, improvise, and overcome.
There we go.
So here we are. Cool.
There we are.
That is awesome. Chief McMaster. There we go. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, a common nation under our indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, that was awesome. Teamwork, right there. All right, council, you have the agenda before you. I would take a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Moved by Alderwoman Morris, seconded by Alderman Favor. Roll call.
Morris?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Favor?
Yes.
Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
Six yes?
Thank you. And then, public participation, I do have a couple filled out. Paul Borick and Morgan Baer, I can't read the last name, but I know that's gonna be towards the agenda items themselves. So moving on to presentations. Item E, number one, presentation of a donation in the amount of $6,603 from Rotary Club to be used towards the repair of the memorial clock at the northeast corner of First Street and Lincoln Highway. Who is here to present? Wonderful.
Well, thank you for giving us the opportunity to give you some money. Former Mayor Smith brought to our attention that the clock, the soldiers' and sailors' memorial clock at the corner, turns 100 years old this year, just as our Rotary Club turns 100 years old this year. So the Rotary Club took this on as, as a project for us to do this year. For those of you who pass by that clock on a regular basis, you know that it has not worked in quite a long time. So through the generosity of the people of the city of DeKalb, and actually, all of DeKalb County, we have raised sufficient funds to get it running, which we will hand to you this evening. But we're also well on our way to raising sufficient funds to get it repainted. If you've been up close, you'll notice that it is very badly rusted in a few places, and it's deteriorating. Not bad for a 100-year-old clock, but it's deteriorating. So there are a couple people I do want to make special note of, to thank. The DeKalb County Community Foundation has been very generous in supporting us in this endeavor. The First National Bank of Omaha, FNBIO. The American Legion and some of their affiliates, the Daughters of the American Revolution, the local chapter of the firefighters. Steve and Teresa Irving have been very generous. These donors have brought us a long, long way. I'd like to thank all my fellow Rotarians who are here tonight. They've done a great job of drumming up support. We're selling tickets to a raffle, if anyone's interested. Be glad to, glad to sell you a ticket or two. I'd like to also thank Andy Ray. Andy, thank you. He's been a great help, as well as Matt Emkin from the Park District. Finally, because I promised that I would do this, I'm Brian Core, the president of the DeKalb Rotary Club. So you get that on your, on your minutes of the meeting. So finally, after all of that, who gets a check? Mayor Barnes.
Let's get a picture.
Yes.
Yeah, let's do that. As if you had.
Appreciate it. Can't say enough about the leadership that you guys had doing the fundraising, getting the dollars to be able to preserve such an incredible piece of our history. Steve Biglin has shared with me many pictures where you see the crowds around Memorial Clock and the different places it's been throughout our community over the last 100 years. So to be able to maintain that, and let alone get it back working, sometimes it's the little things, right, that make the biggest difference. So as someone who grew up here, has seen the clock forever, as a veteran myself, I just want to say thank you for doing that. One more. Come on. All right, and I usually make comment, if you came here for a specific part of the meeting, once we get past that, it is not rude in any way, shape, or form to leave the meeting. Because I know these aren't riveting. Yeah, there we go. Exactly. All right, Rotarians, thank you. All right, moving on to the agenda item number two, proclamation, Disability Pride Month, July 2021. I have a proclamation to read here. Whereas Disability Pride Month is celebrated nationally in the month of July, and whereas this month was chosen to honor the enactment of the Americans with Disabilities Act of 1990, '88, and it is, whereas it is important to take time this month to reflect on the disability rights movement and the progress that has been made. And whereas, the city of DeKalb recognizes that one of its greatest strengths is the diversity of its people. And whereas, the city of DeKalb believes in the dignity of all disabled individuals, supporting equity and ensuring that acts of discrimination and hatred will not be tolerated. And whereas, disabled individuals contribute to our community's success and strength in a great number of ways, of great number of ways, of measurable ways. And whereas, disabled individuals continue to face discrimination for something out of their control and for being who they are, continue to be the target of violence and harassment, and continue to persist through the efforts of the disabled community and the support of community agencies, businesses, and individual allies. And whereas, discrimination on the basis of disability is often compounded with discrimination based off of race, sexual orientation, and gender identity, immigration status, religion, and age, among others. And whereas, the city of DeKalb strives to lead in creating a community based on disability equity through its actions, laws, employees, and commissions. And whereas, the disability community invites the members of the DeKalb community to join them during the month of July in celebrating the persistence and achievements of the community. Now therefore, I, Cohen Barnes, mayor of DeKalb, do hereby proclaim July as Disability Month in the city of DeKalb. And I encourage all people in our community to join in celebrating diversity and promoting inclusion and equity. And I further encourage people to, in eliminating discriminatory policies and practices towards any group of people. All right. All right, second proclamation, Veterans Weekend. So proclamation, Veterans Weekend, July 30th, July 31st, and August 1st, 2021. Whereas, there are many events and activities being planned for the 14th Annual Veterans Weekend of July 30th, July 31st, and August 1st, 2021, to honor veterans, senior citizens, first responders, and healthcare workers in DeKalb County, including the cities of DeKalb, Sycamore, and Genoa. And whereas, veterans have honorably provided service to our country. And whereas, senior citizens have been of service to our community. And whereas, first responders continually provide service to our community. And whereas, healthcare workers provide service to our citizens. And whereas, the year of 2020 was a very difficult year for our veterans, senior citizens, first responders, and healthcare workers. Therefore, to honor all veterans, senior citizens, first responders, and healthcare workers, I, Cohen Barnes, mayor of the city of DeKalb, Illinois, do hereby proclaim July 30th, 31st, and August 1st, 2021, to be Veterans Weekend on this 26th day of July, 2021, and encourage all citizens of the city of DeKalb to honor all veterans, senior citizens, first responders, and healthcare workers. Awesome. Was there anyone for either of those proclamations that was here to receive them at all? All right, just wanted to make sure. All right, moving on to agenda item F, appointments. We have none. So moving on to agenda item G, consent agenda. I would take a motion to bring the consent agenda to the floor?
Uh, Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I'd like to, Russ, to remove the minutes of both meetings for some errors. If that's possible now, or do we need to call it to the floor first?
Looking for a point of order, yeah.
It's, it's a motion to amend.
Okay.
The motion, so that's, it would be heard first.
I'm sorry.
If Tracy's motion, Alderman Smith's motion, would be heard as long as it's seconded.
Okay.
Uh, then a motion to exclude minutes of the regular city meeting of June 28th and July 12th?
Second.
Awesome. Discussion? All right, hearing none.
I can, Mayor, if you'd like me to clarify, there are some, we're not showing our totals on our A4 and yes and no's in our minutes for just one of the items that are missing, so.
Yeah, thanks for the clarification, and I noticed a couple errors too. So we'll just have to get those to City Clerk Cohen and have him update them, and hopefully resubmit those minutes at our next regularly scheduled council meeting. Awesome. So we have a motion, we have a second, no discussion. Roll call.
Smith?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Favor?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
Six yes?
Awesome. All right, moving on to agenda item H.
Now we have, now it's back to the consent.
Oh, gotcha, okay. So I will now take a motion to pass the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second? So it was moved by Alderman Perkins, seconded by Alderman Smith. Discussion? Roll call.
You need to read the items into the record, sir.
Oh, thank you. I love having you here, Ruth. Keeps everybody honest. All right, so the consent agenda now includes accounts payable and payroll through July 26, 2021 in the amount of $2,483,389.21. Number four was investment and bank balance summary through May 2021. Number five was year-to-date revenues and expenditures through May 2021. Number six was Freedom of Information Act FOIA report, June 2021. And item number seven was FY 2021 Human Services Funding Second Quarter 2021 Report. How was that? Awesome. So I think we have the motion, we have the second, so roll call?
Perkins?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Favor?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
Six yes?
All right, now, there we go. All right, so public hearing. So I'd like to open up the public hearing, and I'll go ahead and read what it is. "The Public Hearing Regarding a Second Amendment to an Annexation Agreement for the Chicago West Business Center Located Between Illinois Route 23, Gerler Road, Creago Road, and Illinois Interstate 88, TC Pursuit Services Incorporated and DeKalb 343 LLC." I'm gonna note the time, which is, it looks like 6:13? Is that what I'm seeing? Yes, 6:13? Yes, so at that point, I would ask if anyone in attendance wishes to speak on this particular item. Hearing none. City Manager Nicholas?
Uh, there are two places on our agenda tonight where the details of this proposed development are reflected, and one is this public hearing. And I would be happy to read into the records some considerations for later action by the council. There is an ordinance also up, however the council would like, or I can wait until we get to that point, and then I can read into the records some of the details of the development.
How about we wait until that point, since there was no public participation? Is that all right with council? All right. Uh, any discussion from council? Because we'll be talking about this soon. All right. With that, I'll close the public hearing at 6:14. How's that, Ruth?
Perfect.
Awesome. All right. Looking forward to that discussion item coming up. All right, moving on to agenda item I, considerations. Number one, FY 2022 Budget Schedule. City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. I've laid out a schedule that will look familiar to members of the council who have been through this process for the last couple of years. It proposes that we take our time and go through a review of where we've been this year, where we think we can be in terms of revenues and expenditures, and all the various funds for next year. We invite the Finance Advisory Commission to be with us. And the next step is coming up pretty quickly, and that is to publish an agenda by the end of the day on August 12th. Working on it. And then you have a meeting on the third Monday in August, which is August 16th, in between the regular council meetings, where there'll be a joint meeting. And we'll look at, among other things, the General Fund, which is the fund that most people relate to. It concerns all of our operating departments. And then the Motor Fuel Tax Fund, the Capital Projects Fund, which have to do with our roads and improvements there. And the TIF 1 and TIF 3 Funds, which are always of interest to the general public. And then our pension obligations, and I can preview this, that the pension crisis is not over in the state of Illinois. And we've made it through COVID, and we have a lot of work to do on that particular score. And it does have a very important impact on our budget this year and next year. So more to follow. And if the schedule meets with, with your approval, then we'll lock it in and start laying out the process from here.
I know we had one or two council members that had some conflicts, but overall, it seemed like a majority of us were able to make it. Any discussion or questions from council? Otherwise, move forward. All right.
And the purpose here is to be very transparent about what our key objectives are in terms of the fiscal health of the, of the government and also the community.
Okay. Awesome. All right, so moving on to item number J. Let's see here. Resolutions. Number one, approval in omnibus form of resolutions authorizing Community Development Block Grant, CDBG, FY 2021, Year Public Services Funding Agreements from April 1st, 2021 through March 31st, 2022, in the amount of $63,000 as follows. Resolution 2021-054, Children's Learning Center for $10,000. Resolution 2021-055, Elder Care Services for $9,000. Resolution 2021-056, Hope Haven for $17,000. Resolution 2021-057, Safe Passage for $15,000. And Resolution 2021-058, Voluntary Action Center for $12,000. I would take a motion to bring this before the floor?
So moved.
Second.
It was moved by Alderman Verbic, seconded by Alderman Favor. City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. There's some background here to describe the program. This is that federally funded Community Development Block Grant Program. What you saw in the consent agenda was our local human services agenda, which comes to about $150,000. And the annual allocation for CDBG is in the mid $400,000s area. Fifty, up to 15% of that can be used for public agencies. And so, thanks to Joanne Rouse, who manages this program very well. We went through the process we have for many years in inviting applicants. Of course, those that had qualified in recent years, as well as posting on our website, inviting formally through the newspaper, and in other ways, our Facebook page, and so forth, interest in this, the public agency funding portion. And we got five applicants this year. There were no new applicants this year. The totals are spread in some detail in your background. And we are recommending this to you. This is just a piece of all of the CDBG funding, the breadth of it, and, and the impact that it will have locally.
Counsel? Questions? Discussion? All right. Hearing none. Roll call?
Verbic?
Yes.
Favor?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Smith?
Abstained.
Perkins?
Yes.
Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
Five yes?
Motion passes. All right, item number two, Resolution 2021-051, authorizing an intergovernmental agreement with the Illinois Department of Transportation for public transit funding from the Downstate Operating Assistance Program from July 1st, 2021 through June 20th, 2022, in the amount not to exceed $5,621,396. Can I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Smith, seconded by Alderman Perkins. Discussion. City Manager Nicholas?
Uh, this, it's pretty basic. This IGA provides for $5,621,396 in state funds for the operating costs of our public transit system in our DeKalb urbanized area. We assume that you will support this. There is some background to explain the state grant that funds this. If you're interested, we could talk about that. Marcus Cox is in the audience today. But failing to support this, and we, we fold our system, so I don't think that would be a good idea. So we're recommending you support it.
Counsel?
Is this an increase, Bill?
Uh, I think, Marcus, you know, is there a cost of living in this?
More curiosity.
He asked if there was an increase this year versus last year.
Or is it staying? No, it stayed the same.
Stayed the same.
Thanks.
Any other questions, comments?
Thank you.
All right, hearing none. Roll call.
Favor?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
Six yes?
Motion passes. Resolution passes. All right, item number three, Resolution 2021-060, authorizing a bar liquor license with accessory use licensure for video gaming for Lord Stanley's of DeKalb LLC, 142 East Lincoln Highway. Can I have a motion?
So moved. Second.
Moved by Alderman Verbic, seconded by Alderman Smith. City Manager Nicholas?
Thank you, Mayor. The bar at 142 East Lincoln Highway has been there for some time. And prior to Lord Stanley's, it was known as the Shamrock. And it's, it's been well-known for a long time. The, there's new ownership now, and the new owner would like to open once licensed. And so this is an opportunity for us to expedite that. There are some significant fees involved, and they, there is no disagreement about the necessity of paying this, paying these fees on the part of the prospective owner. And we recommend, and they passed all the background checks and so forth at the state and the local level, so we recommend the approval of this bar liquor license.
Alderwoman Morris?
I just want to clarify that this doesn't mean any new gaming terminals, right?
This, actually, it does, I believe. Is that right, Ruth?
Yes, they had, they already have, there's five gaming machines there now, and they're just going to maintain those as an accessory use.
So it's gonna be the same number, but they're newly licensed, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, so it's a continuation, I guess.
Boy, end of an era. Lightning will no longer own Lord Stanley's. Back in college, I lived above there. Yeah, it goes way, way back. All right, hearing no more discussion? I'll take a roll call there. Ruth?
Morris?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Favor?
Yes.
Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
Six yes?
Resolution passes. All right, moving on to resolution number four, Resolution 2021-061, authorizing an engineering services agreement with Fairgram for design engineering of 1.35 miles of pathway in an amount not to exceed 116,200. I'll take a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Alderwoman Morris, seconded by Alderman Favor. Uh, City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. This agreement would cover the design costs for three different pathways. The total design work would be done at the end of 2022. We're hoping that phase, the first phase of this, Phase A in the background information, which would connect the pathway between Seventh Street and MACOM Drive, where there currently is obviously a lot of traffic, and there are some safety issues. And we'd like to provide a safe pathway for bicyclists and pedestrians. This is something that we've, we've also received some assistance from our community toward. So that's one piece. And then, next year, we would take that from MACOM Drive East toward Peace Road, not to get all the way to Peace Road, because Peace Road is gonna be reconstructed sometime in the coming years. And there'll be some right-of-way expansion there. And so the final steps of the sidewalk, side, or they, I was gonna say sidewalk, but the pathway construction would await the design for that intersection. But persons, just for recreation, or because they're going to and from work, would still be able to get to the buildings that are the furthest east on that roadway, Pandoit and 3M, on this new pathway. And that would be done next year. And finally, Dresser Road, as you know, is a prime pathway for schoolchildren, high school students walking from points along Annie Glidden Road, or along Twombly East, and then they go north. And right now, they trudge in the snow, if necessary, or in the weeds and so forth. So Phase A is to, excuse me, this is the third phase, is to take a pathway along Annie Glidden on the west side up to where the traffic signals are at Dresser and Annie Glidden, and then ultimately across the north side of Dresser, connecting the sidewalk at, the signals at Annie Glidden and Dresser, and then taking the students or the walkers all the way over to Normal, where you pick up a sidewalk that goes into the high school area. So it's, it's a, a long overdue public work. And it will be done, some of it will be done this year, some of it will unfortunately, at this point, not be done until, until next year. But we are accelerating, and I want to thank Zach Gill for his, our city engineer, for his work in pressing this. We are awaiting funding, frankly, and part of this money, the money necessary for this will be coming from Representatives Denver and Keiker in the member initiative grant program, and we're very pleased with their support.
Counsel? Alderman Perkins?
Is there any ETA on the Fairview link? When's that gonna get started? When do we think it'll be?
Zach, because he can give you the detail, but we're trying to get the first leg done this year, and then the next leg next year. And if the weather is cooperative, we should be able to get that done.
Do we have any, any time when we're gonna start that? Because we're, we're nearing August.
Yep. Again, that was a funding question, and now we feel we can proceed.
Yeah, we actually opened bids Wednesday. We'll open the bids for that first section, which is 7th to MACOM. Obviously, get it contracted, we'll get moving, I would imagine, there by September.
Okay.
And it's, it's not a tremendous stretch of bike path. And it's not a tremendous stretch of bike path. Executing that in 30 to 45 days won't be an issue, so.
Okay.
And the second path is due, again, to funding. We're using some STU, a federal match program, that we were never even ever planned to have until next season, so that's why we're waiting for that second part next year, so.
Hang on one sec, Zach. Alderwoman Morris?
I just want to say thank you all for working on this. I know it's really important. I know it's critical to the people in my ward. It's critical to safety for students going to school and it's been, you know, heartbreaking watching people walking in the street and really scary frankly. So I'm thrilled to see this come to fruition.
Thank you.
Yeah, and I was on the school board when we were building the high school and how we missed it, I don't know. So I feel terrible about that, but it's nice to see a wrong being righted at this point. And City Manager Nicholas, I hate to just call you out of the blue, but when do we think we'll do the, along Twombly? I know that's a joint partnership with multiple taxing bodies, if I remember right?
Yeah, and that's to be done this year.
Sweet, okay.
So the lead agencies are the County of DeKalb and DeKalb Township and we're a partner in that for certain features, including the sidewalk, so, but that awaits some other work to be done, but that's our intention.
So that connects suburban apartments, estates and Eden's Garden then to the path?
Now, it does pose, I may as well say it, you all know this, you can see this stretch, so people can go comfortably now with, when that is done, to the intersection at Annie Glidden and Twombly. And then it's helter-skelter, run across the street or not. That's why the, the pathway along the west side of, which would pick you up right at that Twombly terminus, is so important. It takes you up then to a protected intersection.
With a stoplight.
We, we talked about doing something at that intersection at Twombly, but short of a traffic seal, nothing is truly protected. We know people don't really unfortunately regard the, the warning signs and, you know, this is a protected, in fact, it's maybe a false sense of security to even walk in those, those crosswalks sometimes if you don't have a signalized intersection. This will help, I think, in the long run and within a year, we'll have both legs done.
Fantastic.
Three legs done.
Any other discussion? All right, roll call.
Smith?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Favor?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
Six yes.
Resolution passes. All right. Resolution number five, Resolution 2021-062, awarding a bid to Fisher Excavating in the amount of $826,307.50 for 2,800 feet of water main replacement on Joanne Lane between Islandwood Drive and Tilton Park Drive with staff authority to approve change orders up to a final project price of $855,227.50. Can I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
I'll go, moved by Alderman Favor, seconded by Alderwoman Morris. City Manager.
Thank you. A lot of background here, still to say that in Joanne Lane, we have some of the original Tilton Park, what John Tilton put in the ground back in the mid 50s, some six inch and some eight inch cast iron piping. It's been the location of a lot of breaks, including many in recent years. That leads to not only inconveniences during the day, our crews are very efficient in repairing water main breaks. But it also poses the risk of, we don't have the, the fire protection, the fire service pressures and so forth that we, we would like to have and that we have in newer subdivisions in town. So this, this one is overdue as well, but we're ready to go and thanks to the council's prescience some years ago, not that long ago, monies have been committed from the water user fees to the capital fund every year and that is going to help pay for this. Brian Favor and his team and our city engineer have gone out to bid. We got some pretty good bids from, from four different contracting firms. We thought at the time we would also put an alternate in that would allow us to, to see a price for boring new water services. We could just tie in the old services again, but thought while we're at it, we would, we would take a look at what the price would be. Part of what you're seeing tonight, the $855,227.50 includes that alternate and also a contingency of 3.5%, which is, seems to be the, the industry standard, it's the EPA standard. And so that's what's before you tonight. Fisher Excavating is known to us. They are a reputable and responsible bidder and their, their price was a low price, but we feel will be a quality job. So that's what's recommended to you tonight.
Counsel? All right. Hearing nothing, roll call.
Perkins?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Favor?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
Six yes.
Resolution passes. All right. Resolution number six, Resolution 2021-063, amending an agreement with Era Valdivia for painting and repair of the South Water Tower in the amount of $444,000. I'll take a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Smith. I'll give this one to Alderman Perkins, was seconded. City Manager.
Well, I, neither Brian Favor or I expected to be back before you to talk about this tank. Appreciate your patience and also the angst you must have felt as you were reading this background for the first time. Believe me, we share your angst. But we are here, we have to do some business and we have to make sure that this project continues for the benefit of the people in the audience and those that haven't read the background, as the mayor suggested, we have a new agreement with the company that was vetted back in March to do our painting on the South Water Tower. And what is this about? Well, in the course of blasting the, the exterior, this is about the exterior, by the way, not the interior of the tank, we discovered, the, the painting company, Era Valdivia discovered, and then our new consulting engineer concurred that if the painter were just to follow the specs, which was basically to blast away what would fall off and then paint the raw metal as well as paint over the paint that didn't flake off. If we followed that, we, we were going to get into trouble in a matter of years. The guarantee that we had hoped for, the 20, 25-year job would not have been realized. The painter thankfully brought it to our attention and the consulting engineer's attention and said, I, you know, we're not happy about this and this isn't what we anticipated based on your bid specs that were done by Dixon Engineering. And as I pointed out, wish that we were able to have this conversation back in the original discussion of the bids to paint the tower, because then we, we might have gone to bid and added an alternate, for instance, to say, well, what would it, what would it take to, to blast all, all the paint off down to bare metal all the way around the tank and the tower? So that isn't what would happen. We didn't, we weren't assured that that was necessary. So now, what we've come before you with are a couple of options. And in the background, the somewhat less expensive option, not inexpensive at all, $394,000 would be to do some more vapor blasting, that's the water blasting basically, which you can do in the open area, you don't have to put a baggie around the work area and you'll get most of it off. But the problem with that is neither the consulting engineer nor the painter are offering more than a 10-year guarantee for that paint job. And if you can imagine what it's like, many of us have tried painting a house and so forth and, and I don't know if this analogy holds up, but there are times where you just get tired of scraping, right? And you leave that stuff that you know you just can't, you've done everything you can do, you just can't get it off, you figure that's never going to pop off. Well, the problem is that the wood underneath, right, it breathes and it swells and eventually that paint does pop and then you have little pockets. Metal is different than wood, but the metal will take in moisture and the moisture will rest on the surface and get in behind any, the smallest pinhole of an opening. And so eventually we would get some more plopping and then that, that job would not be, would not have any integrity. Option two would be the full removal, basically create a baggie around it, do the, do the more aggressive blasting and that will cost us $46,000 more. Alderperson Larson sent a note today, knowing she wasn't going to be here, and she said, Bill, I recommend, I agree with you that we, for that price, we ought to probably do it right and not have to come back and talk another time about the paint job on this tower, at least in our, in our tenure. And because that would give us a 25 to 30-year warranty, we are recommending that we proceed with that and we not delay. The, the tower is down, the system is, is intact in the sense that if there was a major fire, we could, you know, we'd run our wells that more aggressively and so forth and we have some storage. But this is not the best situation to be in for a long period of time. Our objective is to get all the painting done this, this construction season or this, as the weather is favorable. And so I bring it to you tonight as a decision for you to make. We're recommending option number two. We have the funds to do this. Obviously, we didn't expect to spend these funds, but we have the funds to do this. I won't offer this as a guarantee, but looking ahead, depending on what happens in Washington in the next months, there will be possibly some money for our water system that will offset this. But for now, I have to give you just the, the dark truth, which is this comes out of our pocket.
Counsel? All right. Alderman Favor.
I agree with Alderman Larson. I mean, for $46,000 more, we'll get double the, the life out of it. At this point, it doesn't make sense to cheap out, so I recommend option two as well.
Seen a lot of head nodding? All right. Roll call.
Verbic?
Yes.
Favor?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
Six yes.
Resolution passes.
Do we call out which option on the ordinance?
Yeah, I was thinking about that, whether there need to be a motion to amend it. Technically, the, you've approved the amount that covers it, so the direction that's, that was indicated that there was an, an option two, I think that'll be what we'll just insert. I don't think we need a separate motion.
Alderwoman Morris, you going to say something?
Yeah, do we want to move to wave second reading and approve?
Well, it's a resolution.
Yeah, yeah, so we're good there. But we're, we're good.
Gotcha, gotcha.
Option number two is what we're all on.
The resolution said 440,000.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
Thanks.
All right. For resolution number seven, I have to recuse myself. I'm going to hand the gavel over to Alderman Favor because it does take part in the TIFF district and I am not allowed to participate in that discussion. Alderman Favor.
The gavel is yours. How you want the gavel? Resolution 2021-064, amending Resolution 2020-072, to extend the deadline for the Architectural Improvement Program, AIP, Economic Incentive for the Hillside Restaurant located at 121 North Second Street in the amount of $18,075.50. Can I get a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Smith, seconded by Alderman Morris. City Manager.
Thank you. The owners of the Hillside approached Josh Bolt, Assistant City Manager Bolt and I several weeks ago and were seeking a few months of extension to their TIFF agreement. They, about a year ago, a little over a year ago, were awarded a $18,076, if you're rounded, TIFF AIP grant to do some interior and exterior projects. And as, you know, last year, July was, was a pretty good month and August and September and then the shutdown again and, you know, it wasn't until March of this year that they were starting to open. They tried to do some takeout. I mean, it's, it's a small restaurant, much affected and impacted by the economic constraints and we, we thought it was reasonable to extend. They, they were also having trouble getting, the contractors who they, they had approached a year ago to make it there, they were involved in some other projects and larger projects. So that's before you tonight, we recommend your approval. Comments?
Roll call.
Favor?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Five yes.
Motion passes.
Brilliant job as always, Alderman Favor, thank you. All right, so, all right, moving on to Agenda Item K, Ordinance's Second Reading. There are none, so moving on to Agenda Item L, Ordinance's First Reading. So Ordinance 2021-027, authorizing amendments to Ordinance 2006-107 and Ordinance 2006-109 to accommodate an approximately 700,000 square foot warehouse and distribution center for the Chicago West Business Center located between Illinois Route 23, Gerler Road, Creago Road and Illinois Interstate 88, TC Pursuit Services Incorporated and DeKalb 343 LLC. Real quick, if there's going to be public comment, do I take a motion first, bring it to the floor and then public comment? Okay, I'll take a motion, please.
So moved.
Second.
All right. Moved by Alderman Favor, seconded by Alderman Verbic. And do we usually do public comment on first?
Yes.
Okay. Paul, I'm sorry I missed you on the public hearings, but I know you wanted to speak, so if you want to make a few comments, you can maybe even take six minutes since I deprived you of your first three if necessary.
That's okay, we'll take that one.
All right.
And yes, I was going to defer to the voting item anyway, so that's good. I'm Paul Borick, Executive Director of the DeKalb County Economic Development Corporation, a public-private partnership dedicated to expanding and diversifying the DeKalb County economy, including the city of DeKalb. On July 19th, the DeKalb DCEDC, our board, voted unanimously in favor of a letter of support for ordinance amendments providing for annexation, zoning and site planning modifications to accommodate Project BARB, a new distribution center at the Chicago West Business Center. These amendments advance the spirit and intent of the original Chicago West Business Center annexation and zoning ordinances and further, the proposed site plan addresses the specific and real needs of the confidential project BARB. These actions will enable the investment and construction of the 70,000 square, 700,000 square foot industrial development project, a project that is important to the city, the county, DCEDC, the developer, the operator and no doubt the city of DeKalb. This project will generate abundant tax revenue and create jobs to further expand the city and county economy and to increase the prosperity of county residents. The DeKalb County Comprehensive Economic Development Strategy, or SEDS Plan, calls for DCEDC to work with partners like the city of DeKalb to identify and recruit target industries in strong and growing sectors, particularly those for which DeKalb County and the city of DeKalb provide such distinct advantages like transportation, distribution and logistics. In addition, the Project BARB site in the Chicago West Business Center are located within the DeKalb County Enterprise Zone, which provides incentives for industrial development like Project BARB. Further, DCEDC's Talent Pipeline and Business Retention Committee is working with Kishawaki College, the DeKalb Workforce Development Office, numerous other workforce development service providers to share resources, best practices, recruitment success stories. to share resources, best practices, recruitment success stories, and quality of life assets with all DeKalb County employers to assist in employee recruitment. Developments like Project Barb will continue and extend momentum established by recent developments in the city of DeKalb and DeKalb County, and will keep our region, our communities, top of mind for future development and continued growth. On behalf of the DeKalb County Economic Development Corporation, I respectfully urge the DeKalb City Council to approve the recommended amendments to the Chicago West Business Center ordinances.
Thank you, Paul. Appreciate it. And so everyone realizes, we have Jerry Krasinski here and Morgan Bear Blaska here to answer questions as we go along, but I figure I'd just turn it over to City Manager Nicholas at this point. She deferred to, if there's no public comment, that you can just be here at our disposal if need be.
Well, thank you, Mayor. And I'm very pleased to be recommending your action on this particular item tonight. As Paul hit some of the details I was gonna cover, the Chicago West Business Park has had, has been here since 2006, has been organized since 2006, and fairly recently, our council, Mayor and council, made some amendments to, the first amendment to the original annexation agreement in order to accommodate warehouse and distribution developments relating to the Farrar Candy Company that were not anticipated back in 2006. And that update and review, I think, was very successful, and today you can see the result of that. And thank you for your support. So tonight, a second amendment comes before you, and why is that? Well, the portion of land in question in the business park is just east of the Farrar Pack Center, and just west of Creago Road, and north of Gerler, and south of 88. And that area did anticipate some warehouse and distribution development, but also some other types of development that would not be consistent with the interest today of not only Project Barb, but others who've been looking at that site. So we come before you tonight in support of the amendments to the original annexation agreement and zoning. They are spelled out in the background for you tonight. I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have. The proposed site plan and building elevations for the 58 acres are in compliance with all the regulations and the annexation agreement in relation to setbacks and parking standards and height and site coverage and floor area ratio. Final landscape plan is not required at this point. That will be submitted with the final plans when they are required. The, the annexation agreement already allows for mass grading on the site, and it's the intent of Project Barb to get going if, if the council supports this amendment tonight with mass grading and the related erosion control that goes with that. In terms of transportation, what's anticipated here is something that, that wasn't exactly anticipated back in 2006. At that time, it was envisioned that there would need to be about two access points, private access points along Gerler Road. There will be three. And that follows from some very substantial traffic engineering that's been performed in the years since the first annexation agreement was approved. The access for semi-trailers will be along Creago Road, going north to the northeastern portion of this site, and coming into the site, and then will be exiting at the southwest corner. And there will be two separate points of egress for the employee traffic in and out, so they don't have to compete with semi-trailers coming in and out. There will be more detailed plans for widening so that trucks approaching the site will be able to, to get into a turn lane and get off of the, the main two-way section that, or it's a three-lane section that is Creago Road. Those are the essentials. I, I, just a tip of the hat to Jerry Krasinski who's in the audience tonight, Trammell Crowe. Jerry Krasinski and his family and the company, the Krasinski Construction Company, had the vision 15 years ago, many years before that too, to invest in our community. They have invested mightily. It's not just that there are companies coming in, but the infrastructure that's there, the sewer, the water, the roadway, the improvements on Gerler, all are a part of their, their overall investment as well. So tonight, I'm very pleased to recommend this in behalf of all of our staff. I think it's very good for the community. We're excited. That completes my remarks.
Absolutely. Counsel? Alderman Favor.
Bill, you took several of the ideas that I wanted to convey as well, to just say thank you for the investment that you've made in our community. I was gonna say, you know, the investment 15 years ago, but as Bill said, and I know that it was much longer than 15 years ago, and you've worked very diligently with DCEDC, the city of DeKalb, the county, to look for businesses that would enhance our community. And I just really want to appreciate what you have done, and just want to thank you for that. One of the other things that was unforeseen back in 2006, because I, I looked through the plans, and I know that this was gonna be a kind of a grocery store anchor shopping center. And as you look at the new plans, back in 2006, and the mayor would have to correct me, but I don't think Facebook was a thing.
Their smartphones weren't even a thing.
No, smartphones were not a thing, but I, I don't even know if it was MySpace at the time, right? Now we're dating ourselves up here.
Yeah, I got Facebook in 2008 after my dad invited me to.
Yeah.
So just, you know, some, some advice to all of us, and to, as we're gonna set forth our plans for the, the city plans for the next five years, if you look at the, at the plans, some of the things they never would have considered. Back in 2006, there's 10 EV charging stations for semi-trailers. There's a ride-share facility proposed on the, on the property. And back then, people would be, okay, what's EV and what's ride-share? What is all, you know, so we need to start thinking about where, you know, what, what's coming in the next five, 10, 15 years for us that we need to prepare for. But I think it's just fantastic. Thank you very much. I appreciate your hard work.
Absolutely.
Well, I would like to really thank the city of DeKalb and DeKalb County, obviously, over the past couple of years, just working with everyone here in the community, the utility companies, the partnership with our partner, Trammell Crowe, on this development. We've all just come together and just found a way how to overcome some of the challenges. So thank you, and we look forward to some additional opportunities down the road. Thank you.
Any other counsel comments?
Here.
Yes, Alderman Verbic.
I enthusiastically support this and certainly applaud everyone involved. Your results? DeKalb works. We're serious about forming more partnerships with business and industry, and thanks to each and every one of you for, for this work. One question I have on Creago Road, and I applaud that the developer's willing to be a partner on what this work could result in. It's likely a road widening of Creago, and then a signal perhaps at Creago and Gerler, or what would that imply?
Yeah, I'll let the senior engineer help me a little bit, but there's no signal anticipated there. You know, we have a roundabout just a little bit to the east there, and that will help traffic navigate. And the, the improvement, it's not gonna be a curb and gutter improvement, maintain the ditch system if I'm not mistaken, and Zach, you can help me from here.
Correct. Creago will simply be brought up to just kind of like a modern two-lane standard. So it'll be a bit wider, obviously, and the asphalt thicken, but it'll just remain shouldered with, with the drainage ditches on the side. There's no anticipations for turn lanes on the Creago extension itself. There will be a turn lane for the westbound traffic on Gerler, so that as the semis decelerate to access a new facility, we'll, you know, peel them off of Gerler and keep that open to the Farrar and other through traffic. So that's the nature of the improvement. I, I mean, anything can happen, but at this point, it would not be signalization. Remember, south Creago has now been vacated to Facebook, so there really shouldn't ever be, you know, cross traffic. It would simply be Creago, there'll be a right and left turn lane for anyone coming southbound to split out on Gerler and go about their way. So, yeah.
Great, thank you.
Anyone else? Well, Jerry, you've been an amazing partner. I, everyone's already said it, but I can't say enough, and I really hope the city of DeKalb and county, like you said, have been great partners to you. So with the utmost thanks, all your diligence, hard work, and investment. It's really cool to be on this side of it now. So thank you. Yep, yep. All right, hearing no other discussion or comments, we'll take roll call.
Morris?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Favor?
Yes.
Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
Six yes?
The ordinance passes. So I know it's been brought to my attention that time is of the essence on this particular project. So to move it forward as rapidly as possible, I would love it if I could have a motion to waive second reading.
Motion to waive second reading and approve.
Second.
It was motion by Alderman Smith, seconded by Alderwoman Morris. Discussion? Roll call.
Smith?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Favor?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
Six yes?
Ordinance passes. Second reading passes. Oh, come on, man. That is just too exciting. All right, moving on to number two, Ordinance 2021-028, authorizing amendments to Ordinance 2002-045 and Ordinance 2019-004 to amend sign regulations for the Northland Plaza Shopping Center, Sycamore Road, B33 Northland Plaza LLC. I'll take a motion. So moved.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Smith, seconded by Alderman Verbic. City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. This is also an exciting development, and we, we're pleased that TJ Maxx is going to be relocating and staying in our community. They're gonna be moving in the back of what we've called Northland Plaza for some time. And when I say the back, more, more remote from Sycamore Road. And that poses an interesting challenge in terms of visibility where they are now, much more wide open, and you can see them from the road and closer to the road, to the four lane. But the new site will not have that same proximity, and there, there are some front buildings, outbuildings that also block the division. So there's a, a graphic that's up here now that you can see where TJ Maxx would go up on the north side of, of where Aldi is now. And as you're driving through there, you can see it's pretty much right behind the Panera building. And even if, as you were northbound, if you were to look back, you see, you'll see a sign that might indicate that it's in the back, but you have to make a quick look. That's a, what is it, 45 mile per hour highway at that point. So what they have proposed is something that works for them, but also, I think, works for the, the other units in the back there. And as there is turnover, we've taken that into consideration too, rather than doing one and then doing another one and so forth. And so what's proposed here is a ratio between the, I should back up. So the size of the wall signs in these commercial strip centers is based on the feet of fronting. So for every foot of fronting, you get a square foot of the wall sign. And what they proposed is something that we have seen. I don't know if we have a graphic showing what the sign is. There we are. So you can see just below that, the blow up of the, the lettering, what the facade will look like. And the sign is in, is not out of proportion to that size facade. They're gonna be enhancing the size of the facade so that, again, they're visible, and there's more curb appeal to the variations that are in, on their facade. So what they proposed is, is the two, two square feet of signage for every lineal feet of building facade. There was even some talk of going to three, but we, we reached a consensus on the two square feet. And so what's proposed in this ordinance is, is an amendment to the sign regulation for the Northland Plaza Shopping Center that would allow this. The Planning and Zoning Commission reviewed the proposal and was in accord with the staff recommendation that this would be agreeable and would not be excessive in terms of, would not be designed right and so forth. So it comes to you with a recommendation by a vote of seven to zero from the Planning and Zoning Commission, and we, we support their recommendation.
Counsel? All right, hearing none, roll call.
Perkins?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Favor?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
Six yes?
Ordinance passes. I know, again, timing is of the essence on this one, and I think there was a request to waive second reading as well, City Manager?
Correct.
Move to.
Okay.
Second.
So moved by Alderwoman Morris, seconded by Alderman Favor. I love the enthusiasm. Discussion on that? Roll call.
Verbic?
Yes.
Favor?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
Six yes?
Waiving second reading, passes. Excellent. All right, moving on to Ordinance 2021-029, authorizing the distribution of American Rescue Plan Act 2021 funds to the Kishawaki Water Reclamation District in the amount of $241,644 from Fund 110. That is 110-00-00-63800. I'll take a motion. So moved.
Second.
It's moved by Alderman Verbic, seconded by Alderman Perkins. City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. Back in late June, at the last regular meeting in June, there was a brief description of the process that might unfold as we consider how we would use the money that had been allocated to us from the American Rescue Plan. And then at the last regular meeting, there was sort of a preview where it showed some money that would come out of escrow, escrow funds that had already arrived in, in the city coffers from the federal government that could be spread in very general categories. But one very specific category was on that list, and that was the possibility of a grant that would go to the Kishawaki Water Reclamation District. And for, for people wondering, well, how do they figure, like, you know, there's a lot of, lot of agencies out there. Well, they're a taxing body, and the, the federal guidance is very specific that there are small taxing bodies such as the KWRD that will not get and have not gotten any direct distribution from the US Treasury. The county in this case, or the city, could authorize the allocation to this, they're considered non-entitlement units, but they are units of government. And because the KWRD is performing duties that in many municipalities the city does, this is the sewer treatment function, they, the guidance here really would be that the city is the entitlement body to authorize an allocation. And so they have applied for some consideration. The, the number here is very specific, and it's, it's tied to the data that they, every year, call from their meters at NIU. So they actually meter the, so it was very easy to know what the impact of COVID was in terms of the closing of dorms and, and the lack of student activity at NIU. And that's what this is based on. There wasn't an attempt here to look further at, say, commuting students and maybe the drop in, in their, their enrollment as well. So we feel this is a, a very, is fairly modest in terms of overall impacts of COVID on this particular taxing body over the last year and plus, plus year. And we, we support. this particular taxing body over the last year and plus, plus year, and we support this. I appeared before the board of the KWRD last week and informed them this was on the agenda, and I discussed some weeks before the possibility of this with the executive director, Mark Eddington, who's been here before. We are clearly locked at the hip when it comes to utilities in our community, and feel that this is a fair distribution, and ask for your support.
Counsel? All right, hearing none, roll call.
Favor?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yeah.
Verbic?
Yes.
Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
Six yes?
The ordinance passes.
Now, Mayor?
Yes.
The reason I'm proposing second reading on this is, or two, is twofold. One is, we have had some discussion about this before tonight. The other thing is that we owe our first report based on whatever activity we have up to July 30th, and the report itself is due within 30 days of that deadline. I'd like to show the federal government that we're actually thinking about spending some of this money, that was their intent, and it was also their intent to help with revenue losses first, as we ramp up to more aggressively attack new problems that are recommended in qualified census tracts and so forth in our community. So, this is sort of taking care of business, and if we could do that rapidly, then we can get it on our report to the federal government at the end of the month.
So there's a request to waive second reading?
Second reading.
I would take a motion?
Move to waive second reading and approve?
Second.
Moved by Alderwoman Morris, seconded by Alderman Verbic. Roll call.
Morris?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yeah.
Verbic?
Yes.
Favor?
Yes.
Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
Six yes?
Fantastic.
Thank you.
All right, moving on to item number M, Report and Communications. I'll start with you, Alderwoman Morris.
Just very briefly, I want to thank you for your proclamation on Disability Pride Month, as a disabled veteran myself and the leader of a disability organization, Ramp, it means a lot to me, thank you.
You bet. Alderman Perkins?
No report.
Alderman Smith?
No report.
I know. Lucky I called on you at all. Alderman Verbic?
No report.
Alderman Faver?
No report.
I've got a few things I just wanted to cover. One, great meeting, counsel, it's awesome. Shows everyone's been reading the information, reaching out to the city manager with questions, great way to operate and do business, so it was a wonderful, wonderful meeting. I did want to encourage everyone out there to get vaccinated, dang it, you know, the rates are starting to rise again, the Delta variants out there, whatever you've got to do, go on to Google, educate yourself about the benefits of getting vaccinated, so I would just highly encourage everyone in our community, everyone out there in cyberspace right now listening to this, go get the shot. Do us all a favor, do our community a favor by doing so. Second, I just want to let everyone know, I met with the District Two representative for IDOT on the Gerler Road Signal Project, and then as well, they call it the Road Diet, but our downtown transformation that we're going to be making. Zach, I got to say thank you for your help on that, that was great, so hopefully those projects are moving along, and we'll get those done by the end of the year is the goal, but I wanted to make sure counsel knew, I'm definitely nudging IDOT as much as I can to help get those done. WLBK, I am on the third Thursday at 9:15. TD Ryan has a radio show on WLBK, it's highly entertaining, and I'm saying this for those out in cyberspace, if you want to listen to a bunch of questions that he throws out the mayor, Scott can attest, I have no idea what these questions are, and boy, he just throws a bunch at me in rapid-fire succession, but it's really a great experience, and it's just another way to inform the community on what's going on. Did want to thank the Sir Donald Foundation and Center of It All, they had a Father's Day event that they invited me to and let me speak, that was just a really nice way to spend, I think it was Sunday, yeah, Sunday, with them. I also got to go to the coin toss for DeKalb County United, that was just a cool mayor thing, going out and flipping the coin at a sporting event, that was, that was a lot of fun. And I also attended the CCEC meeting, the Citizens Community Enhancement Commission meeting, a great group of people, great dynamic, and they've got a lot of ideas, and some of those, when it comes to public art, are going to be being brought forward to council, so I'm really excited to see what they come up with and their recommendations. And then, I'd be remiss if I didn't thank Chief McMaster, 26 years, man. Can't tell you how much we appreciate your dedication to the community, dedication to the fire department, just absolutely fantastic, and can't say enough about your willingness to stay around for a little period of time here at least, as we start looking for a new police chief, or a new fire chief, that just makes it easier on all of us, and I think that just shows your continued character that you have and that you've brought to the job, so, thanks for the 26 years of service, chief. All right, and with that, we'll move on to Agenda Item N, Executive Session, the approval to hold an executive session to discuss the purchase or lease of real property as provided for in 5 ILCS 120/2C5. I would take a motion to move to executive session?
So moved?
Second.
Moved by Alderman Verbic, seconded by Alderman, or moved by Alderman Faver, seconded by Alderman Verbic. Roll call.
Smith?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Favor?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
Six yes?
All right, the move to executive session, passes. With that, we got to clear the room, people.